Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December tenth River Falls Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I'm sorry.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a roll call, please, Amy.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll. Downey.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the November twenty-sixth meeting.
I so moved.
Second.
Okay, first second on the minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, in favor? Oh, we need a roll call.
Can we confirm Mr. Carroll is on?
Yeah, that's true.
Line?
He is there, but we can't hear him.
It looks like he's...
Okay. However you would like to proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Nick, can you hear us?
Hey, council and mayor, can y'all hear me?
Yep. Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, someone muted me from your side, not in my side, so I think for the remainder of the meeting, I have to be unuttered to participate, otherwise, otherwise it won't unfortunately work.
Sounds good.
Okay, I will start with Carroll.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes. Okay, next move on to approval of the bills with Mr. Morsette.
Mayor and council, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of one million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and fourteen cents, subject to the comptroller's review.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments on the bills? Amy?
Downey.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody on us, anything like to say, come on up. Sign your name and address and phone number for us.
Oh, you want a phone number too?
Yep, and we, we, we limit everybody to two minutes.
Hello, thank you, council. I'm Jamie Johnson. I'm running for the office of St. Croix County Circuit Court Judge, branch two. I hope to take the place of Ed Black, who's been in that position for twenty-four years. I bring to the office thirty-four years' dedicated service in St. Croix County in both the legal field and my community. In my legal career, I've had experience as a criminal prosecutor, a civil litigator, and a mediator. I've handled hundreds of criminal and civil matters in a wide variety of issues ranging from personal injuries, real estate, contractual and commercial disputes. In addition to broad experience as an advocate in private practice, I have successfully mediated dozens of emotional and sensitive disputes. And I volunteered my time for the St. Croix County Small Claims Court for almost ten years, and years before that, providing guidance and advice at the free legal clinic. Outside of my legal work, I have consistently dedicated time to serving organizations in St. Croix County, including being elected to four terms on the Hudson School Board, serving the last eleven as president, leadership in volunteer positions at my church, Bethel Lutheran Church, past president in seventeen years with Hudson Daybreak Rotary, the St. Croix Valley YMCA, and other organizations. My commitment to justice and my community is central to who I am. Those of you who know me and people that have worked with me say I'm a good listener, and I have the demeanor, temperament, and skills for being a good judge. If elected, I will bring my core values of hard work, dedication, integrity, and fairness when I go to work for St. Croix County residents and businesses. And I would be honored to earn your vote, support, if you're a St. Croix County resident. And if you want to know more about me, you can go to www.johnsonforjudge.org. Johnsonforjudge.org. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Jane. Okay?
My phone number right here.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Krista Spieller, and I'm a resident of River Falls. I live on State Street, really close to the university. I'm here today to urge our city to reach out and inform residents who are affected by new city developments and to provide opportunities for them to give their insight and their input. Just last week, I learned about the council's vote at the last council meeting to approve the city's purchase agreement for acquiring the property at one three-two Vine Street, which happens to be just across the street from where I live. Because of that situation, I also learned for the first time about our city's broader plan, the campus corridor concept, which was accepted by both the Plan Commission and the City Council in January of 2020. And I learned that I live in what's designated as the West Cascade District, portion of the campus corridor concept. I'm puzzled and disappointed that my husband and I were not notified when this plan was being developed. And now I call on our city of River Falls to change its ways, to reach out to residents who are impacted by upcoming plans and actions. Inclusive proactive communication fosters trust in our government and strengthens civic participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Recently, the council approved the purchase of a property for a hundred and twenty-five thousand over the objections of two members. It's not possible to tell if you were aware that the property had been purchased just a few months prior for eighty-five thousand dollars. Since there is no public record of any discussion on this purchase, it may have taken place in adding meetings closed to the public. State law requires that minutes be kept of these closed meetings and made available to the public after secrecy no longer serves the public purpose. Unfortunately, River Falls ignores this state law, so only those present know if you were made aware that your choice to purchase this property would provide the owner of two months with a fifty percent profit of forty thousand dollars. The public trusts you not to waste tax dollars, and this was pretty clearly a breach of that trust. If the members of the council were not aware that this property was worth much less than the city paid for it, now would be a good time to ask Administrator Simpson why. On the other hand, if you were aware of this unusual short-term purchase by a River Falls resident, why did you not, why did you proceed without an investigation of how a private individual was able to purchase this property for eighty thousand dollars just a few months, and the city was not? These are questions the public deserves answers to, preferably sooner than later. On the other hand, I want to congratulate the River Falls Municipal Utility for beginning to implement the corrective measures at the city compost site that Mike Stifter suggested before his resignation. It's unfortunate the DNR had to intervene to get that ball rolling, but now that it is, I hope the city will implement the rest of the suggestions quickly. It's not only the right thing to do, but should save taxpayers nearly a hundred thousand dollars over the next few years. Thank you.
Benjamin Fox, F O C H S, twenty-five twenty-nine Powell Avenue. I want to thank the city council for their proactive choice to increase funding for removal of emerald ash bor and such related things. It's kind of interesting in current movie is that green is bad. And so, I mean, emerald ash bor is going to take out a lot of trees in this town. And I don't think people are quite aware of how many those are. As I see the pink and white hearts, I know they're not hearts, of trees are going to be removed. I don't think people realize how many of those are going to be gone within the next five years. I do believe there used to be a program for gravel beds for replanting trees. With the university, I hope that program also gets funded, along with removal of the trees. Because I think it's going to be, it's going to be, it's the season of the sticks right now. And as you look through this town, the city and around area, you see the damage we had from the storms this summer in August, and you see the amount of trees that are decaying and dying and shattering. So I thank the public works people for being proactive on this, and I hope that council keeps supporting new trees in this town because green is good sometimes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Doing it without the candy in the hand. Good evening. I'm William Hansen, N eighty-seven twenty-three, ten twenty-fifth Street, River Falls. It is December, and time for another visit to the River Falls City Council by a jolly, white-bearded old gentleman who reminds you that your Junction Falls dam and hydro generator runs even on Christmas Eve and produces over one point two million kilowatt hours of electricity. Locally generated renewable hydro energy directly benefits our seven thousand four hundred electric utility customers as a supplement to their electric budget. This local power clarification offsets a part of the power cost of each individual's electric bill. Hydropower also benefits each of us as this renewable energy reduces our dependence on electricity sourced from burning fossil fuel. As you enjoy your city nighttime Christmas decorative lighting, be reminded that some of the electric energy for this enjoyable experience is the product of our own Junction Falls hydro-generated electrons. Ho, 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 and Merry Christmas, and a strong, sustainable stewardship future to all and to all a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Is there anybody else has anything? Okay. We, so right now, we're going to have a Alina Health EMS presentation. Matthew Boulay is the ambulance operator supervisor, and he's going to give us an update on the EMS operations.
It's a tough act to follow. My name is Matthew Boulay. I'm the operations supervisor with Alina Health EMS. So I oversee the day-to-day operations for EMS here in River Falls, Prescott, and also all the surrounding areas. First off, it's been four years since the transition from the city of River Falls EMS to Alina. I don't know where the time went, to be honest with you. I guess that's a sign that it's been fun. Because we all know time flies when we're having a good time, so those four years have been filled with quite a bit. We've grown a lot as an organization. I think we've grown a lot as an organization, providing a service within this community as well. Chief Young invited me to come and give you guys a presentation. My boss reminded me not to give you a PowerPoint because I'd get comfortable up here and be stuck with me for a half hour. So I do have some operational data I'd love to share with you guys, and by all means, could facilitate any questions you may have. But there are a few other operational aspects I want to highlight in our journey for the last four years. So one, obviously, there was a little bit of an issue with the pandemic right around the time of our transition. So the steady state was kind of hard to determine from, from the get-go. I think we're there now. But what we noticed with staffing was a real challenge for us initially. I'm happy to report that we have grown into our, our operation now. We're currently one hundred and five percent staffed. There's not a lot of EMS agencies or public safety agencies for that that can report those kind of numbers. So we're sitting in a really good spot there, and subsequently, all the operational data largely supports that that staffing is, is, is a big benefit to the community. So I'm very proud to report that. That's an increase from the municipal city of River Falls EMS days, where there were about nine FTEs on the schedule. We now have twenty-four FTEs on the schedule, providing that service to the community. And we're optimally staffed, so we do upstaff our contractors to ALS ambulances twenty-four seven, and we choose to upstaff a third ambulance upwards of fifteen hours a day. And we are able to meet that promise to the community seventy-five percent of the time. So we're sitting really good on the staffing front. But more importantly, what are those staff doing when they're actually out in the trucks? And it comes to experience, patient experience specifically. Out of the fourteen cost centers that Alina has, kind of people I can compare in benchmark to, in a hundred and ten thousand nine-one-one responses, our team here in River Falls has the highest net promoter score. Basically, would you, would you recommend Alina Health EMS to a, to a community member score? It's over ninety-five percent for our cost center. The, the team we have, not only do we have some fairly robust staffing, but they're doing really good work in the community, and it shows, both in quantifiable data and then also just the qualitative feedback we get from folks all the time. Really no negative feedback. I haven't got any negative feedback via the council or from Chief Young. And the community really seems to be happy with the service we're providing, and we're really happy to be able to provide it, too. This is such a great place to work, and I am so grateful every day I drive into work that I get to do this job here in River Falls. We continue to make significant investments into EMS operations in the community here. In the last four years, we've invested quite a bit into the facility that we house out of on Cedar. Everything from carpet and paint to IT infrastructure, so we can better operate out of that building, and a cool irrigation system, too, I might add. But in addition to that, we're, we're continuing to invest in our ambulances and invest in our staff as well. So we still retain a critical care endorsement, advanced life support license, which is the highest level of emergency care that you can provide pre-hospital in the state. All of our staff go through that training, and they're actually at the station as we speak, going through that training right now. There's some significant costs that come with that. Every one of our trucks has a ventilator, which is about a twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment on it and ready to go at all times. Multiple IV pumps, invasive line monitoring, high-flow oxygen, which we learned during the pandemic, is a great tactic that we can employ to keep somebody off of a ventilator for longer transfers. And that has, that's helped a lot of people as well. And as far as I know, we're the only service on this part of the state that has that high-flow oxygen capability in the ambulances at all times. But in addition to that, we've invested in a vehicle repeater system, a radio system that allows us to both interoperate with the services around us, but also still be able to communicate effectively with our communication center in St. Paul, which allows us to better manage our resources. And that was a pretty significant expense, about seventy thousand dollars to make that happen. And all of our trucks a few months ago were outfitted with a power-load stretcher system, which is a huge benefit for us. It's a back saver for us. This, if you're not familiar, is a unit that can help us lift the patient in and out of the ambulance. Basically, we just have to get the patient on the stretcher, and from there, the manual labor for us is done, and we can focus on the clinical care. But this limits the amount of wear and tear, not only on our clinicians, but also on other responders. We don't have to ask police or fire for as much lifting assistance. And it is not a small expense for those ambulances, anywhere from ten thousand to forty thousand dollars, depending on the amount of retrofitting is necessary to get that installed, so a very significant expense. Moving forward, our fleet is aging, so we're going to be making some significant investments in replacing the ambulances. For those of you that remember, that's, that's a minimum three hundred thousand dollar expense per ambulance, if you can even find them. The market is very, very difficult right now. Thankfully, as a larger supplier, or sorry, larger purchaser of ambulances, we can kind of go up towards the top of the list and make that happen a little bit quicker. But perhaps most importantly is the, the relationships that we continue to build. We've had great experiences getting out in the community for special events. The, the best opportunity for us to get out and showcase what we can do is not on a nine-one-one call. Stressful environment, and obviously, we're, we're pretty mission-focused at that point. But getting out for special events, whether it's parades, presenting at high schools, presenting at the library for social club, or anything along those lines, are always fantastic opportunities. And as far as I know, we have not said no to one single special event request to this point. We are very, very, very community-oriented and community-focused. And perhaps the name on the side of the truck has changed, but I want to remind everybody that those are still River Falls ambulances. They start their shift here, they end their shift here, and they do ninety-nine percent of their work in this community as well. The staff really haven't changed. A lot of familiar faces, some new ones as well, but most of the folks that work in this community still have ties to this community, whether as residents or doing commerce in the community as well. So I can certainly regale you guys with a ton of operational data if you want response times and whatnot, but I could also sit up here for hours, and I know you guys have a busy agenda as well. So I'd certainly open up to any questions you guys may have.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Yep. Thank you for coming. I've got two questions or things I want to just talk about. One of the metrics, when I was on the EMS board when we transitioned, and I know one of the metrics that Dave always talked about was, and I may get this wrong, so help me out, but the ninety percentile response time? Can you talk about where we're at? I think our benchmark was nine minutes, if I'm not mistaken. Do you remember, Scott? Different zones, okay. Could you talk about the ninety percent response time?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll give you two answers because I want to be one hundred percent certain of getting the right one. So we have my favorite metric, which is response reliability. And our contractual obligation, promise to you guys, is that we're going to make that response reliability time ninety percent of our calls. So that is in the city of River Falls and the city of Prescott, sub-eleven minutes for response time. We measure that from the time we pick the phone up to the time the ambulance is idling in the driveway. We don't fudge any numbers. We have a very conservative way of measuring that. And in the rural communities, it's a eighteen-minute response time. So ninety percent is our promise to the community. Here in River Falls, that number for the year is currently at ninety-six point eight percent. And it has historically been, for our entire service, in the ninety-five to ninety-six percent range, going back to twenty-twenty. Then the other one is the ninety percent response time. I don't like using response times as much because the numbers are so large that the averages really don't move much. But I did pull that data, so from the last city of River Falls EMS report, twenty nineteen, that ninetieth percentile response time was nine minutes flat. Ours is state consistent with that, and this year, we're at eight forty-two inside the city here. So response times have, they haven't changed a ton, but they have, they've only improved.
Great, thank you. My other thing that I'd like to ask about is, is our, our mutual aid responses. I know that we have a good relationship, or Alina has a good relationship with Lakeview, and vice versa. When we, when we get into the Hudson and Town of Troy areas, you know, we're responding for them. If they're out, they're responding for us and so forth. I'm more curious as to what our relationship or how, how much response have we been doing for Ellsworth and Spring Valley, sort of that pocket between Prescott and Ellsworth? And that's catching you off guard, and you may not have that off the top of your head, but if you could speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so our, our primary mutual aid partner is Lakeview, largely because we know they have staffed ambulances at all times. And we also do dispatch for Lakeview as well, so we have the extra knowledge of knowing exactly where their trucks are at any given second. So it's easy for our dispatch to kind of lean on them. Ellsworth has been pretty consistent. We do, on average, about two to three runs a quarter for them. They do about one to two for us. So it's a, it's a net give to them, but the numbers are very small. Very little work with Spring Valley. They tend to lean towards Baldwin out of proximity and familiarity. We do, we do a lot more work with Hastings as well. As a combined fire EMS agency, if they get a fire, they, they kind of hang the ambulance up for a little bit, and they, they lean on us to provide that service. And when we have the third truck in the system, it's pretty easy to, to do that.
Good, okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Mayor? Has there, first, thank you very much, and I appreciate your presentation here. But I'm, I'm just kind of curious if there's been any increase in specific community needs or trends that you've observed this year compared to others?
No.
That's a good thing in my book, then.
Yeah. Run volumes have been very consistent. We see about a three percent annualized growth, and that's been very consistent from twenty nineteen up until now. The community is growing, but at a very sustainable rate. And then system-wide, for us, it's about four and a half percent. So we're, we're well-positioned to handle that growth and, and ready to grow into it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No, I, you guys have done a great job. It's been a great partnership with you guys. You know, hearing your guys' reports makes it a lot easier for us to know that we did the right thing by partnering with you guys, so we really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and present today, and thank you for the opportunity to provide the service that we all love to do in a community that we all love to, to live in and work in and do business. And it's, it's truly a blessing and honor and a privilege to be here.
Thanks.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the consent agenda. First is a change of agent for Family Correction. If this passes, we'll appoint Christopher Campbell as a new agent. Next is the agent, change of agent for Whole Earth. And if this motion passes, it'll, we'll appoint Jess, Jess Amanthi. Am I saying that right, Jess? Jess Amanthi as the agent for Whole Earth. The next one is a resolution approving amendments to the purchasing policy. Then we have a resolution to accept the public improvements to Renaissance Academy. This would accept formal, formal ownership of the public utilities for the Renaissance Academy and a developer's eighteen-month warranty period for the public improvements. Next one is a resolution approving the weights and measures assessment schedule. This resolution authorizes city staff to recover the fees for inspections of weights and measures equipment as provided in Wisconsin Statute ninety-eight point oh four. And the next one is a resolution approving the amendment to the professional services agreement with ISG Incorporated for the design, environmental review, and grant assistance to the library project. Does anybody want to poll anything? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask them agents questions. I don't know if you want me to poll them to do that, or if I can just do them? No, go ahead, just do them. Okay, could I ask the two agents to step forward, please? And I mentioned to you before the meeting, this will be pretty simple. I ask every agent in town, whether it's a bar or anybody selling off sale alcohol, three basic questions. Do you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Okay. Do you understand, or do you possess a responsible server's certification?
Yes.
Okay. Do you understand that if an alcohol-related violation occurs, even if you're not there, you're responsible?
I understand that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Anybody want to poll anything then? Be safe. Okay, go ahead.
I, I will, Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of consent and agenda items three through eight.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? Okay, Amy?
Morsette.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Okay, next we move on to comptroller's report.
Okay, comptroller's report for November twenty twenty-four. General revenue, general fund revenues through the end of November were thirteen million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, or ninety-nine percent of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in November included two million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars for shared revenue, thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars for building permits, nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars for vehicle registration fees, and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for general property chargebacks. Expenditures through the end of November were eleven million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars, or eighty-seven percent of total budgeted expenditures for the year. So as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, net revenues over expenditures were one million, six hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Thank you. Okay, next move on to administrator's report. Scott, if you've got anything for us, or anybody has anything for Scott?
While you're thinking of your questions, project updates. The city celebrated the reopening of South Lawson with a ribbon-cutting ceremony last week to acknowledge the work done to complete the project. Appreciate all the city staff. for their leadership working with the state of Wisconsin on their project there, and also the patience and cooperation of the community, as we made a pretty significant impact on that part of the community. City partnered with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation and AN SAC construction, and one of the big highlights, of course, is the new roundabout at the intersection of South Wausen and East Cascade, and had a chance to go through that quite a few times already, and seems like it's meant to be there. So, that's a good thing when we get done with the project, that seems like a fit. So, do want to remind folks that city hall will be closed December 24th and the 25th, as well as January 1st. But with that, I want to do, appreciate all the city employees who will be working during the holidays, as we are a 24/7, 365-day operation. So, wish everybody a happy holidays.
Okay, anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, I just got a couple good news reports. First, I'd like to congratulate Officer Dylan Horn, who was sworn in last week as the newest member of River Falls Police Department. Officer Horn previously attended UWRF and chose to come back to River Falls to begin his career in law enforcement. And then, we had four members of the River Falls Fire Department were recognized last week at a pitting ceremony, including the newest firefighters, Ethan Serna-House and Gabe Trakoff. Also offered at the ceremony was Sean Sliku, who was promoted from firefighter to captain, and Matt Serna-House, who was promoted from battalion chief to division chief. And then, this will be the last, this is the last meeting of the year, so I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And from there, I have a couple appointments I'd like to make. I'd like to, to Julie Advisory Board, I'd like to appoint Joshua Amundson through May of 2027, and Borderly Pills, I'd like to appoint Chris Holcomb as first alternate through November of 2027. I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept your appointments.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any questions? Amy?
Biersted?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Odine?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn? Amy?
Odine?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yep, yes.
Biersted?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Are these from Lambo? Oh, yeah. Yeah, don't you guys want them? I got a hundred of them around the house. They came in and saw the kids, and they gave the kids a handle of them, like, yeah. And you notice they put the made in China, right? Where everybody can see it.